I call the April 26, 2022 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our guests. Thank you for coming out today and participating in your county government. If you want to be placed specifically on any of our agendas for our regular meetings, you'll need to contact the county administrator's office at least seven days in advance of the meeting to be placed on the agenda. However, we do allow members of the public to address matters presented by the public that's non-specific on Agenda Item Number 19. Again, welcome everyone. Our first item of business consideration today is Agenda Item Number Five, the Items of Consent. What is a pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no additions or corrections, make a motion that they stand approved as ready.
Second. All right. Have a motion, a second, for items of consent to be approved. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Six, Consideration of Resolutions and Proclamations. We have with us a few individuals today, and we would like to read those in their presence. A couple others are going to be delivered. Mr. Hall has agreed that he will deliver the one on behalf of Jim Weiner, which is six-A. Also, the Martinsville Henry County Crime Stoppers has indicated that they would like theirs presented at a celebration that they will have on May 10. And we were expecting some from Oklahoma Rulichen Club. Don't see the person that was indicated that was going to be here today. Ms. McKenna, if you would, you have a resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of Piedmont Community Services for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Supervisors, marking their 50th anniversary. Whereas Piedmont Community Services was formed in 1972 to provide behavioral and mental health services for the city of Martinsville and the counties of Henry, Patrick, and Franklin. And whereas, the mental health of every citizen is essential to the emotional and the economic prosperity of our families, communities, and businesses here in Henry County. And whereas, we strive to create a community that supports behavioral and mental wellness by increasing access to treatment, educating ourselves and our communities about mental wellness and mental illness, and supporting our citizens as they seek to improve their mental health. And whereas, approximately 430 staff members at Piedmont Community Services served 7,257 individuals and families during 2021. And whereas, these services include but are not limited to outpatient counseling for mental health and substance abuse, case management services, parenting classes, school-based programs, and residential services. And whereas, these services have positively impacted our local youth through partnerships with the school system to locate case managers, support early intervention programs, and promote a drug-free MHC through a youth task force represented in all areas of the high schools. And whereas, Piedmont Community Services is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year, signifying an immeasurable and irreplaceable impact on our community. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 26th day of April 2022 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes this milestone anniversary and thanks Piedmont Community Services for its 50 years of dedicated service to Henry County. And this is signed. Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Ms. McKenna, if you and Vice Chairman Bryant and Supervisor Dillon would present this on behalf of the board, I would appreciate it. We have with us Greg Preston from Piedmont Community Services. Greg, welcome. And if you'll introduce your associate, I apologize, I did not get your associate's name.
Yes, Ms. Brenda Eifert, she's our board chair. Step up in front, please. Step up in front. One, two, three.
On behalf of our board of directors, our director's team, our staff, thank you for the kind words. We are so proud of Piedmont's perspective of serving Henry County for the last 50 years. If I could date back, in 1968, Virginia Code enabled each local government to form a community services board. In 1972, the Piedmont Regional Mental Health and Mental Retardation Board was formed by a joint resolution of the counties of Henry, Patrick, and Franklin, and the city of Martinsville. In 1973, Lambert Wood became the first executive director. In 1974, Patrick Henry Drug Control Council received a grant for $29,128. Mr. Jim Tobin was the first executive director of him. In 1975, Patrick Henry Mental Health, excuse me, Patrick Henry Mental Hygiene Clinic had an annual budget of $100,000. Fast forward 50 years, 2022, Piedmont, as was stated, employs 430 employees. We oversee 25 different facilities, and our annual budget is approximately $30 million. In the counties of Henry, Patrick, and Franklin, and Martinsville, we cover 1,593 square miles. We serve over 7,200 individuals and families in 2021, and we're on target to exceed 7,400 individuals in 2022. As was stated, the Code of Virginia, 37.2500, established CSVs to provide mental health, developmental disability, and substance abuse services for the counties and the city they represent. Again, Piedmont serves Henry, Patrick, Franklin, and the city of Martinsville. And we are excited. We're geared to have a strategic planning session in the next couple of months to plan for the next three to five years. I'm proud to share that we are expanding services, and we are creating new services in order to meet the needs of the community. I invite each of you on May 20, starting at 10 o'clock at our new recovery center. We'll have a ribbon cutting and a celebration. And afterwards, we're meeting at the Jack Dalton Park at 12 o'clock to celebrate our 50th anniversary. So again, on behalf of Piedmont Community Services, our board chair, Ms. Brenda Eifert, thanks for the kind words. I would be remiss not to say that I truly appreciate the ongoing partnership and relationship I have with Tim and definitely with Dale. It means a lot. We meet quarterly. They are really concerned about what's going on in the county and how the county can help support Piedmont with our mission. So again, thank you, and we truly appreciate the kind words and the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. Okay. Once again, I do not see anyone indicating that they were representing Oklahoma Rulichen Club. I do have one other proclamation I'll turn the board's attention to, that's six-E, which is Resolution of the Henry County Board of Supervisors Recognizing National Peace Officers Memorial Week in Henry County. Whereas, the board of supervisors, our families, our friends, and our neighbors all have the good fortune to live in Henry County. And whereas, a major reason for that peace of mind is the quality law enforcement provided by the men and women of the Henry County Sheriff's Office who helped create and maintain the wonderful quality of life that we enjoy and put themselves at risk each day so that the citizens of Henry County can enjoy without fear the opportunities afforded them in this great community. And whereas, six Henry County law enforcement officers, John Hughes Mitchell, George S. Frame, John J. Johnson, Willis Herman Ferguson, George Melvin Brown, and Paul Edward Grubb have given their lives in the line of duty. And whereas, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that falls as Police Week, May 11 through 17, 2022, has been set aside to remember all fallen law enforcement officers across the nation. Whereas, Wednesday, May 11, a locally joint Peace Officers Memorial Service will be held at the Henry County Administration Building in the Summerlin Boardroom at 11:00 a.m., and is a time to recognize the sacrifices made nationally and locally by the brave men and women of law enforcement, particularly our six fallen officers. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 26th day of April 2022 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors declares May 11 through May 17, 2022 to be National Peace Officers Memorial Week in Henry County. Furthermore, the board realizes that while a mere thank you is inadequate to convey the true feelings of this community toward the Henry County Sheriff's Office, the hope is that these heroic men and women accept our deepest devotion and admiration for themselves, their profession, and their six brethren who made the ultimate sacrifice. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Collectively, along with the other resolutions with those that are not represented here today, I'll accept a motion that we adopt all the resolutions and proclamations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. And with that, I would assume that this resolution will be made in a hard copy. I do not have one here that will be presented during Peace Officers Memorial Week. All right. Thank you. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Seven. We actually had two people requesting time on the board's agenda seven days in advance. Have first Ms. Sandra Haley, Ms. Haley.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Adams, Vice Chairman Bryant, members of the board, and Mr. Hall, Mr. Wagner. Thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to appear before you. We are once again making a request for supplementary funding. I hope that all of y'all had an opportunity to review the material with the background of Mr. Wagner. It's a specific request that we have. It's a 5% request for supplementary funding. And I broke it down the same way this year as I did last year. I divided up our caseload by jurisdiction. Henry County is by far our heaviest jurisdiction, which makes sense because of population. And Henry County's portion of a 5% is listed in bold on the last page, $15,190. That constitutes 48% of our caseloads. Caseloads have dropped significantly. And our current caseload asset today is 757 cases. That covers all three jurisdictions. We are down to six attorneys. One of ours recently left. And of course, like many localities after the pandemic hit, we had been allocated for 59 new positions across our entire agency by Governor Northam in his budget. That funding was frozen. By the time it was unfrozen, we were in the midst of the pandemic. And of course, we continue to have recruiting, constant recruiting. And I know all of you are familiar, and those of you in government, with recruitment and retention. It's just a huge challenge right now. So anything you all could give us, even if it's not the total amount, we would be tremendously grateful for. Pick a number, we will be glad to accept anything that the board could see fit to give us. If you compare the supplements to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, there really is no comparison. Our office with our attorneys, we, where our six currently go up against 13 Commonwealth attorneys. Mr. Neser's office has a total of six attorneys covering three courts. We have six attorneys covering nine courts. And our office is just always extremely busy and very hardworking. And we would be most appreciative of any consideration that the board could give to us. And I invite any of you at any time to come visit, come take a look at our office, have lunch with me. Any additional information that you might be interested in or need before making a decision, I would be glad to provide that to you all at any time. You can just feel free to get in touch with me. And I will like to add that I'm grateful that I was here for the proclamation about Piedmont. I know Mr. Preston quite well. There are many programs that his organization provides that is tremendously helpful to the citizens that we represent with the treatment programs, the housing options, the help for folks that are developmentally disabled. They have an excellent jail diversion program for folks that have limited housing options. They may have a coevalent mental health disorder or diagnosis. They have great staff on the ground that springs these folks and helps them look for services. So that's a lot of work to do as well, as they just need social work and mitigation efforts to help the folks that we represent so that they're in a much more stable position. In any event, so that was kind of a side issue, but I was very glad and congratulate Piedmont as well. So thank you very much. And if anyone has any further questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to get in touch with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have, in this afternoon, Ms. Kathy Deacon, Executive Director of the Martinsville Uptown Partnership. Ms. Deacon.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to come and give you a little update on some of the work that we've been able to complete over the last year. It seemed like an appropriate time, since next week I'll celebrate my one-year anniversary as the Executive Director for Uptown Partnership. As many of you know, Uptown Partnership was formed about a year and a half ago through generous funding through the Harvest Foundation. And since that time, we're really proud of the work that we do and feel that it's really important for all of us to understand that how crucial a vibrant downtown is to both the regions and cities. Over the past two decades, U.S. downtowns have experienced a resurgence regarding their prominence, growth, livability, accessibility, and economic output. As we know, this area has been through a little bit of a downturn over those also last 20 years, with lots of folks working towards revitalization. There's started to become some momentum, and we want to make sure that that carries forward. We know that downtowns are the center cities where people, capital, and ideas have historically coalesced due to their size, proximity, and density. A strong downtown is critical for a successful city, a successful county, and a successful region. Once thriving again, Uptown, with its relatively small share of landmass, can provide significant economic and community and regional impacts, with multiple benefits for both the city and the county and the region. We want to see Uptown once again serve as an epicenter of commerce, capital investment, tax-based increase, diversity, public discourse, knowledge, innovation, along with providing social benefits through access to community spaces and public institutions. Uptown can again play a crucial role as a centralized hub for the city, the region, in terms of a space, a sense of place, excuse me, employment, civic engagement, arts and culture, historic importance, local identity, and financial impact. This is why Uptown Partnership, in collaboration with the city of Martinsville, Henry County, and many organizations, are working together to create a vibrant, attractive, and charming uptown district that's welcome to visitors, residents, and folks from all over the region. And we don't want to forget about investors as well. We want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to attract additional investors into our community. These revitalizations efforts have begun to gain some momentum, and we will try to take all of it. It will take all of us working together to see the momentum that is taking hold continue in ways that benefit all of the citizens of Martinsville, Henry County, and the broader region. We're really excited about a couple of things that have happened over the last probably six months. One of the most exciting opportunities that we've had, we did engage a consulting team out of the Richmond, Virginia area. They came in and put together some recommendations through what we are calling an Uptown Community Visioning Plan. We've had the opportunity to engage with our citizens over those recommendations. We are not implementing anything in vacuum. We have invited community members into, we've had one session, we've got a series of four sessions of community engagement sessions that are taking place between now and June 4. You guys are all invited. Our next one is this Thursday from 12 to 1:30. And what is, this is giving us an opportunity for all of the community members, all of the organizations, to actually take part in implementing or looking at prioritizing some of the recommendations that have been made. We're really excited about that deep engagement that's taking place. We feel like it's a first, perhaps in a long time, of that kind of engagement with the citizens. After all, this is where they live, and we want to create a space that is what they have decided they want, where they want to live, work, and play. On March 18, we had an event called March Madness. And one of the things that really struck me, we had over 300 people who came into our uptown area. We had some food trucks. We had music, families, you know, it was folks from all across both Martinsville and Henry County. I know that because I was there. And I purposely tried to speak to just about everyone who was there. And what was really surprising to me is that nearly half of the folks that I talked to were from Henry County. They lived and they worked in Henry County. Some of them may have worked in Martinsville. But a good portion of folks that were there were from Henry County. And it really got us thinking about how important it is for us to work together as we continue to look at what's best, not just for Uptown, not just for the city of Martinsville, but for Henry County and the greater region as well. As we all know, you know, I live in Uptown now, and I watch our citizens go to Roanoke, to Danville, to Greensboro every weekend, and take their hard-earned money, most of it earned right here, and spend it another places. So we're working really hard to both attract businesses that the community wants to see, those kinds of businesses that they're going out of town to visit every weekend, and to create a sense of place that feels like home, not just to our citizens and residents that live in our communities, but also to our businesses. We want to create a thriving environment for the businesses to survive as well. One of the other things that I'm really excited about, I've had the honor, Brandon Martin sits on our advisory board. And I've had the honor of working with Brandon over the last, gosh, well, almost a year. And Brandon and myself and the CIO from the city of Martinsville came together. I knew that there was a grant opportunity to kind of market the assets in a community. And what felt really important to us is that, and by us I mean Uptown Partnership, is that we recognize that all of our assets put together make a pretty dag-on, nice place to be. And so we are collaborating, we submitted in partnership with the city of Martinsville and Henry County on a grant to promote all of our assets in both of our communities and into a greater regional reach so that folks from outside of here actually know all of the pretty tremendous things that we have to offer. One of the other things that we're really proud of is that, you know, we're generously funded by Harvest. It's a $250,000 investment on their part approximately, over two years, in the operations only. We had no project money. And over the last year, we have been able to leverage that generous investment in us into an additional quarter of a million dollars that is going to actual project work in Uptown. And we're very excited and very proud of that. And I hope that you guys will get to come and see. I'm going to give you a leave behind that will kind of give you an idea of some of the things that we've accomplished over the last year. But I hope that you will come and visit. We've got a new Wall Street alleyway project that's nearing completion. We hope to have it finished by the end of May. And the paving just got done this weekend. That was another project where we had some design options put together by Frazier Societies out of Stanton, Virginia. And they gave us four options, and we actually put that out to the community and said, which option do you like the best? And so the community voted on the paving option itself and some of the design elements. So we're really excited about that. Hope to have chairs and tables and lights all in by the end of May, along with some other pretty cool things. And, you know, we're excited to be a part of this broader community and just really excited for all the support that we receive from Henry County in our endeavors, because it truly takes a village, and the village isn't just Uptown. It isn't just the city of Martinsville. It is us all working together regionally. And I really appreciate your time and your attention. And I'm going to provide a leave behind so that you can all just take a look at some of the broader projects that we've gotten done over the last year. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you for that update. We'll now take up Agenda Item Number Eight, a Report on Tax Collection Efforts, Delinquent Tax Collection Efforts. We have with us the County Treasurer, Scott Brianstaff. Welcome, Scott.
Good afternoon. This is the report as of March 31, 2022. Personal property collection, we have collected 88.34% of the 21 personal property tax. During the month, we collected $329,984. Real estate collection, we've collected 92.06% of the 21 real estate taxes. During the month, we collected $269,045. Since the first of January 2022, taxes collected $183,078. And so far this month, we've had 23 DNB stops collected. Actually, I just finished a meeting with two ladies from TACS, you know, trying to see if there's anything else we can do. So we were working on that. April 15, I mailed up delinquent real estate, personal property bills, and we've got a lot of collections in since April 15 on that, so that's going well. I want to give you a report. You know, we moved the due date to February 4 this year due to unforeseen circumstances. I'll give you a comparison. January 21, which is the first full month after the 2020 due date, our personal property collection rate was 87.56. You see now that our March 31 is 88.34, which is the first full month after the new due date. And so we were right in line. So it hasn't cut us off yet over the two months. But since the delinquency notice is out, so I'm hoping that'll catch back up to normal. And we were actually ahead of where we were previous year. And I believe we have a judicial sale scheduled sometime in June. And so that'll be another sale. We had a non-judicial one in January, so we're off in the bushes.
So anyone have any questions of Mr. Brianstaff?
Yeah, Mr. Brianstaff, and I got the report that was sent to all the county supervisors on the delinquent taxes that has been outstanding for multiple years.
Yes.
What are we doing about trying to get some of these back taxes? There's a lot of money. There's a lot of money tied up in these taxes that hasn't been paid.
We're trying to collect them.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the tax, we're doing. The real estate, only thing you can do is sell it, that's what we're doing. You know, that only nets us probably 50 to 60 parcels a year. It's a lot of work from that. Personal property, you know, those are a little bit more difficult, cars coming in and out, but I work with Linda trying to make sure all that's cleaned up and legitimate. So, actually, I just had a meeting with TACS, see if there's any other strategies out there, you know, as far as I feel like we're doing all we can do, you know, what resources we have.
Yeah, I'm just, there's some, there's some really big ones in here, you know, with the tax collections on it. And I know that, is there a timeframe on this collections of back taxes before?
Personal property stayed on the books for five years.
That's what I thought.
Real estate stayed on for 20 years.
Okay.
We started putting judgments on, we have, we do have a case, a low coming up, a document in general district, we record judgments, and that lets us stay on another few years.
Okay. And the reason I even mention it now is because, as everybody knows, things are really tight, you know, the budget and so forth, and, you know, these back taxes would, if we got a hold to some of them, would be tremendous help, you know?
I agree.
In a business, okay.
We're trying to, we're working on it.
Okay.
We're exhausted everything I know of.
You mentioned a couple of strategies. What are all of the resources and tools that you have to collect the various taxes?
Personal property, we have the DNB stop, which is the best. You know, I'm not, Mr. Dillard, I'm sure that's where we put a hold on their vehicle registered protection, and they cannot renew it until taxes are paid. That's been really good. Last year, we collected over 1,078 cases of that. That was our best year by far. You know, you can't renew your tags, you can't drive your car, so that works better than anything. We do wage claims, we do bank claims on personal property. Real estate, actually, it's a slow go, but this is mainly trying to sell a property. And, you know, what we do with our sale of property, and I'm not sure if all of you aware, the things we sell, the things y'all talking about is to run down, beat up places where there's not actually anybody living in them. There's probably, when I tell people, it's in the grandparents' names still, and we're running down heirs and things like that, people not actually living in them. So unfortunately, that's what we're going after first for the many years delinquing. I try to work it from top dollar down to the lower, you know, so if something's out there old and doesn't owe us a lot of money, I'm working on something that doesn't owe us money first.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Agenda item number nine, we have with us Sarah Hodges, Director of Tourism and Talent Development for the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation, who will give us a report today. Sarah, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. Today, we just kind of wanted to give you all an update on recent changes within the tourism office and the visitor center and kind of the visit Martinsville brand. As you all probably know, as of February 25th, the permanent physical location of the visitor center closed. Nothing service provider-wise has really changed, it's just that that physical location was no longer a responsible use of our resources. We still have information access for our external partners, so people who are looking to come to our community on our website, as you can see here, there is a pop-up bar where they can request information as well as a prominent place on the home screen. There's several other places throughout the site. For internal partners, we have gone around and made sure we've talked to everyone as best we can and let them know you can still email us, you can still request 40 packets for your family reunion coming to town, you can still pick them up at the same location, we'll just come down from the third floor and meet you. So information access for all of that is still completely available locally. If you'd want information to your home, we'll mail it to you, there's no fee for that, so you can still access what you need. As well as just having information out when people are visiting our area, or if you have somebody come in and you want to pop over and get some resources real quick, this is a list of the current 34 locations throughout Martinsville and Henry County where we do stock, the Small Visitor Guide, the blue one you see up front, as well as the Large Relocation Guide, which we just got the new copies out Friday, and you all have one on your desk. So that information is at those facilities. There is a sticker on the front, if you can see on that bottom picture, that's at the ground floor, where if they run out of information, they can call us, but we also do regularly do runs monthly to make sure that that information is up to date. And the third thing that will be joining these locations, as soon as we can finish, is we are redoing the map that we had previously provided, because it, the older version we used basically was like, here's the visitor center and out, so we don't want to put that message out and confuse anyone. So there is an old version of the map that's actually framed in the lobby that seems to be everybody's favorite, and so we're reverting back to that one and just updating a bit. So as soon as that one's ready, that will be available at all of these locations as well, and also downloadable as a PDF on the website. We do have eight highway signs in our community that say, "Visitor Center, turn right." We have put in a contract and paid the bill to have these removed in February, and like everything else, there's just a bit of a delay. So we did contact the company that represents VDOT on these roadside signage, and they were able to come beginning of April and put up a closed sticker on all eight until they can be removed. Originally, it was supposed to be at the March, now it's end of May. So we have tried to address that issue so that we are not having people be dissatisfied by driving off the highway. Not the best look, but they should be down soon. And we are also following up with tourism partner lunch and learn, so we are going to our tourism partner businesses, attractions, restaurants, events, established event stakeholders, and lodging, and just kind of updating them with a similar presentation. So when you have folks coming to your area for a one-day event at the Museum of Natural History, and they may ask, "Where can I find where to go to dinner tonight? Or can I find other events happening this weekend for small children?" We are making sure that the staff that is front-facing, as well as any volunteers, have the same knowledge and tools to access all of that information on our site that we have. So we're going around now and meeting with those folks and making sure that they feel comfortable and prepared to assist visitors in our area. Future plans, we are hoping, we have met with several other entities that have kind of rolled out a similar plan. They've closed their physical visitor centers and are going with well-outfitted mobile units to meet the guests, the visitors, where they are when they are here, which seems to be a huge satisfaction from visitors and everything we're getting back from our community partners that have done this. Instead of saying, "Oh, yeah, have a great time at the museum," and then drive 10 minutes over here to pick up information, it's going to where they are and assisting them from there. So we really do feel like this is a little boost our guest satisfaction and our visitor satisfaction. This is an example of a rendering from a mobile unit when we spoke with some folks in Dallas. We really like the layout and the thought process in this and are hoping to implement something like this in the future. It will, there seems to be kind of two basic models for a mobile visitor center. One is being a regularly scheduled four-day-a-week in a season, April to November, that's always known to be at a location, which seems to be your large, much larger metro communities. We think that based on feedback, what would be most beneficial to our area would be an event-based. So we would go to events and be set up there and reach our visitors and help them find other things going on in our community. And if we did go off of 2022 calendar events, that would put us roughly at, I want to say it was 136 events per year during that season of April to November. So it would be heavily utilized. That's all.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. Sarah, are you still providing information at the visitor centers and rest stops in Virginia?
Yes, we still have the program through the state office.
Yes.
The PMAP program, so we are still on 77, 81, as well as all of the ones when you enter the state. All of our information is still being shipped there.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10, I will take up financial matters, beginning with 10A, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing the construction of Dick and Willie Passage Trail Phase 6A. Mr. Hall?
Staff is asking the Board to appropriate grant and reserve funds totaling $1,388,387 for the construction of Section 6A of the Dick and Willie Passage Trail. This amount includes $257,251 from the reserve fund to the county's match. In addition, staff asked that the Board award a contract in the amount of $1,902,470 for construction, inland construction incorporated of advocate. Inland was the low bidder for the project. Staff also asked the Board to award a contract in the amount of $265,000 to Hurt &amp; Profit Incorporated for construction administration and testing services related to this project.
With that, and the Board has had an opportunity to review the background material on this, what is the desire of the Board in regard to the appropriation and the awarding of the contracts?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board approve an addition, approve the appropriation totaling $1,388,387 in award contracts to inland construction incorporated and Hurt &amp; Profit Incorporated as outlined above.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Any discussion? Hall in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. 10B, an award of contract referencing grading work on Lot Number Five at Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Mr. Hall?
Staff asked the Board to award a contract in the amount of $750,000 to CW Carley &amp; Sons Incorporated for site work at Commonwealth Crossing Business Center, Lot Five. CW Carley &amp; Sons was the low bidder. This project consists of clearing, grubbing, excavation, erosion control, vegetation, and stormwater management to prepare a 6.7 acre pad-ready site. If you're familiar with Commonwealth Crossing, this site is as you go across the state line into the park, this parcel is just to the left of that. We feel like it's perfect for a small manufacturing or mixed-use opportunity at some point and hopefully.
Okay. In regard to awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that the staff award a contract in the amount of $750,000 to CDW Carley &amp; Sons Incorporated for site work at the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center, Lot Number Five.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hall in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. 10C, an award of contract referencing engineering services for Lot Number Two at Commonwealth Crossing Business.
I decided it's a little deeper than CCBC. The county was recently awarded a grant from the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program to perform site work at Lot Number Two in Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Staff asked the Board to award a contract in the amount of $800,000 to the tenants group for engineering services for the site work. The contract is based on terms of a current contract with tenants for work also at CCBC.
Okay. What is the pleasure of Board in awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I move we award a contract in the amount of $800,000 to the tenants group for engineering services for site work at CCBC, Lot Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hall in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. 10D, an additional appropriation referencing grant funds for the school board. Mr. Hall?
School Board requests that the Board of Supervisors appropriate the following funds totaling $355,424. Number one, $50,000 received from the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, elementary and secondary emergency relief grant for a tutoring program and an after-school program. Item number two, $133,656 received from the Virginia Department of Education, school-based mental health grant to aid in the recruitment and retention of mental health workers. And item three, $171,768 to the school board's contingency reserve for grants to account for the BDOE grant and any additional grants awarded this fiscal year by the BDOE. Dr. Boone is with us today, should you have any specific questions?
With that, what action would the Board like to take in regard to the additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation, $355,424 of the school board.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hall in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. 10E, an additional appropriation referencing asset forfeiture funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall?
Sheriff Perry asks that the Board appropriate $26,957 received for state asset forfeiture funds. Sheriff Perry has indicated that the funds will be used to cover the overtime costs associated with moving inmates from the old jail to the new adult detention center and for overtime expenses associated with changes in the court mandated by the circuit court judge. Don't see Sheriff Perry, but he's got able replacements back there, should you have any questions?
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the Board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board approve the additional appropriation of $26,957 from the state asset forfeiture fund.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hall in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. That takes us to agenda item number 11, a consideration of a resolution referencing West Piedmont Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan for Public Safety. Mr. Hall?
Matt Tatum, our Director of Public Safety, is requesting Board approval of the West Piedmont Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan. County staff has worked closely with the staff of the West Piedmont Planning District and other jurisdictions to draft and propose updates to this plan. Localities are required to update this plan every five years. Mr. Tatum was with us, should you have any questions?
The Board has significant background material on this, I think totaling around 50 pages, or something like that, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to review. In regard to the proposed resolution, what is the desire of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve the proposed resolution in support of the West Piedmont Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hall in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 12, informational items. I will begin by taking comments for the Board, starting with Mr. Zayer.
No, sir.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes, sir, I do want to, you know, give a couple of comments, and, you know, one thing, you know, when I ran for this position, you know, really put a lot of thought into it, something I never thought I would do, but one of my platform planks, or whatever you want to use politically, was to empower citizens through transparency. And, you know, working in the school system, I've always learned that transparency is so important, and, you know, that way people know what's going on, people, if they have questions, they get the information out front. And I think it's important that, you know, we as a county operate that way, not saying that we don't, but, you know, we're always looking to make improvements. And one of the things that I would like to see is that, you know, anytime we have, you know, certain jobs that they're posted publicly, I think, you know, that allows for transparency. That way people know what the job criteria is, when the job's open, when the job's going to close, and, you know, there may be candidates who are outside of the county who may be interested in applying, so that, you know, something I think is important, and that creates that transparency. And it also allows us to truly select the most qualified candidate. And I think that's always the goal, is to get the most qualified candidate, especially, you know, in jobs of this nature, because so many people's well-being, finances, lifestyles, and everything, you know, depends on that. And I'm rooting for Dale. I've had an opportunity to talk with Dale and really, you know, a fan of Dale, and I think that, you know, Dale is moving into a different position, and I think that his success, and we should all be rooting for Dale, because the more successful he is, the more successful Henry County is, the more, you know, pride we take in our community. And I think that, you know, Dale has some, you know, big things out in front of him, reversion, the new jail, there's some budget items, COVID is still out there, you know, Dale is the deputy administrator, but he is, he's still growing into that role of administrator. You know, we've got the drugs, the crimes, the poverty that, you know, still out in front of us, attracting new businesses to come here, and, you know, there's so many other things, and I think that it's vital that he has the best team possible to support him, because we all know that, you know, when you're in a role like that, your team is going to determine your success as much as you are. And I think, you know, posting, you know, jobs publicly allows him to get that best team, you know, possible. And I want to just go on record stating that I recommend that, you know, any high-level jobs in Henry County, you know, are posted openly and not just internally, but also externally. And I think another part to that is, is that, you know, we want to see our county employees who put the time and the energy and the effort into it to be best prepared for those jobs. You know, let's create some training programs so that, you know, possible future openings, individuals who are interested go through a training process, so that when those jobs come open, that gives them, you know, maybe the advantage over other candidates, but, you know, let's create those opportunities for them. know, let's create those opportunities for them. And, you know, I just think, you know, everybody have been receptive to those thoughts, to those comments, and, you know, do appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As many of you know, May is the month of Memorial Day. And of course, for any one of those that's been in the service can tell you about Memorial Day and what it honors our fallen soldiers. So we honor them every year, one day out of the year for Memorial Day. But a lot of times, what gets neglected is the POWs, the ones that was captured during the war, some has not even come home. Some will probably never come home, many is probably dead and are buried or rotted somewhere in another country. But I think the gentleman that come in last month that talked a little bit about POWs kind of hit a spot in my heart, because my father was in the service, he wasn't a POW, but he was in Vietnam in 1962 to 63, in the early part of the Vietnam War, in the Special Forces. And, you know, from what I understand, it was a pretty hairy situation when he got over there, but, you know, I've heard tales, and I've been in the service for twenty years and reserves, retired out of reserves for twenty years. And I met a lot of really honorable people while I was in the reserve program. Some fought in different wars throughout, you know, my time, my lifetime. And they all kept the same thing in mind, is that we gotta remember the POWs, the prisoners of war, the ones that didn't come back home, the ones that are still being held against their will. And what I'm recommending today is I'd like to make a motion that we make the month of May POW Memorial Remembrance Day and fly the POW flag along with the American flag at the county buildings for the month of May. So that's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion? The only discussion that I would have on it is, are those resources available to us as far as the flag of an appropriate size?
Yes, sir. I do believe they are.
Yes, sir. We have secured those flags.
Okay.
We're prepared to fly those.
Okay. That would be my only question since we're quickly approaching the month of May.
Yeah, I kind of did my due diligence just a little bit, and Mr. Wagner has cut the flags, taken care of.
Any other questions or discussion?
Are we just gonna fly them the month of May?
That's the motion. We would do whatever the board directs us to do.
You know, maybe I might clarify it. Yeah, I would like to see those things flew every May, you know, for the month Memorial Day, remembering the prisoners, not just this particular May, but the upcoming May's as memorial, POW Memorial Remembrance Day.
Right away as the board passes this.
Okay. Motion, second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Bryant, do you have any other items?
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan.
Two things, just piggybacking off of what Joe just said, I would want to remind everyone about the Memorial Day program on May the 30th there at Rose Lawn, starts at 12 noon. And also, I would like to thank county staff for writing the letter to SOVA. Jim, I appreciate you working with Mr. Hall to get that done. Thank you.
We have, we have the copy of that at your desk.
Yes.
I guess the board motion would be appropriate for us to send that.
Mr. Chairman, if everyone has had an opportunity to read it, I make a motion that we do send this letter to Mr. Thomas and Mr. Larson at SOVA Health.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Anything else, Ms. Buchanan?
That's all.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
I don't have anything else other than, no, the five of us that are dressed similar are not a part of a singing group, unless the other part of the podium down there, they have agreed that they will work up a number, I think, at some point. Correct? This, again, we want to once again bring attention to the fact that we're celebrating the 75th anniversary of the Martinsville Speedway. Design of the logo credited to Brandon Martin and other members of county staff, and it was suggested the other day that we donned the same shirts to recognize that, at Mr. Dillard's suggestion. I have no idea what he's gonna suggest for next month, but with that, thank you, Mr. Dillard, for bringing that to our attention.
We're gonna get a long tail done like Deborah and wear a tight sundae.
Well, let me explain that. As I said, if there were five women on the board and one man, would y'all have ordered five women's shirts and would that one man have worn a woman's shirt?
Well, well.
I could have worn leggings with mine.
The next time, we will, we will give an alert somewhere like Soup City if we all decide to dress in the same color. Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir. I have several things. First of all, I had the privilege of attending an event at Ramet this morning with the Patriot Center, the NC3 National Signing Day. This is National Coalition Certification Center. It's mirrored on the athletic signings where folk were kids at a table and signing where I happened. But these were young men and young women who were going to attend Patrick and Henry Community College and get a trade certification or a two-year certification. There was a bevy of young people who are entering the welding program, which, as you know, has 100% job placement. Several for the motorsports program, some others in the electrical maintenance and other areas, but there were about forty students from city and county schools who took place and they well-deserved, took part of the welding signing event today. And it was good to see them here practicing. Their parents were there, very proud, taking pictures. It was just a very cool event, and I was really honored to have been invited to be part of it. A reminder that the Chief Tassel Building uptown, there's a grand opening for those apartments that have been renovated in that building, it's Thursday at two o'clock. This is really the first come to fruition part of that housing conference we had a couple of years ago that has led to this housing addition. This is the first one that has come to completion, so I would urge you to attend that if you can. As you know, John Red Smith and Field Hill School are coming closely behind, and we hope to have those done in the not too distant future. So if you have a chance to attend that, please feel free. Public hearing on our budgets, scheduled for Monday, May the 9th, 7:00 p.m. in this room. Reminder that the employee banquet, recognition banquet is Thursday, May the 12th, at 6:00 p.m. at NCI. And I believe that's, that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. With that, as allowed by the Freedom of Information Act and the Code of Virginia, if someone will cite the items allowing us to go into closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Section 2.2, 3711A1, for discussion of appointees to the Henry Martinsville Department of Social Services Board, Parks and Recreation Board, Patrick and Henry Community College Board, and Piedmont Regional Community Services Board. Section 2.2, 3711A7, for discussion of pending legal matters. Section 2.2, 3711A3, for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate. Section 2.2, 3711A5, for discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. I'll see everyone upstairs in five minutes. Close meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, a second by Mr. Zayer. Mr. Wagner, will you call the board, please?
Do you search by the closed session, we all discuss public business matters after the end of the dinner, if any, if there's any motion to be included? Mr. Zayer?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillard?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a appointment or reappointment to the Henry Martinsville Social Services Board for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to reappoint Joshua V. Tucker to the Henry Martinsville Social Services Board for a four-year term expiring May 31st, 2026.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Hall, do you have any items that we need to consider prior to a recess? Board members, do you have any? We will stand in recess till our six o'clock meeting. I call the 6:00 p.m. session of the April 26, 2022 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. I'll remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of a meeting to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public also may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public later in this meeting, and that will be agenda item number nineteen. At the same time that we're conducting this, agenda item fourteen, we have a six-year secondary road plan that's an open format going on in an adjoining room. They will be taking input from six o'clock to 6:30, and then later in the meeting tonight, we will have general highway matters under agenda item number twenty, and Ms. Hughes from VDOT will be back in here at that time. This afternoon, under agenda item number six, there were numerous resolutions and proclamations that the board adopted as part of a motion, second, and adopting, one of which was a resolution honoring the 50th anniversary of the Oak Level Ruin Club. Mr. Slaughter, I believe that you have that resolution for you to read publicly.
Yes, Chairman. This is a Henry County Board of Supervisors Resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Oak Level Ruin Club, whereas the Oak Level Ruin Club was chartered on June 13th, 1973, with thirty-four members driven by community service, and whereas many of our citizens donate their time, talents, money, and energy to helping their fellow man, and whereas members of the Oak Level Ruin Club have worked over the past fifty years to provide ramps for local residents, scholarships for students, and assistance with electric, medical, and funeral expenses, whereas the generosity has extended to the lost fortunate in our nation, the veterans through free breakfasts and numerous donations and aid, and whereas the Oak Level Ruin Club's apple butter fundraiser has reached those all across the country and abroad, and whereas due to their community impact, the Oak Level Ruin Club has received several awards from the Dan River District Ruin and the Ruin National, and whereas its twenty-eight present members have carried on the mission of the original charter, devoting thousands of hours over the past fifty years to making Henry County what it is today, and whereas the Oak Level Ruin Club is celebrating its 50th anniversary in June 2022, and continues to set the standard for civic involvement in this community. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 26th day of April 2022, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes this milestone anniversary, and thanks to the Oak Level Ruin Club for its fifty years of dedicated service to Henry County. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Motion, we accept this.
Second. For motion and a second, all in favor? It is six zero. Mr. Slaughter, if you and Mr. Zayer will present that on behalf of the board, and Representative, Mr. Atkins, I think, and others, if they wish to come forward to accept this on behalf of the club. Ms. Buchanan, I believe you have a resolution for the board's consideration tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizing the Nelson Motorsports team. Whereas Nelson Motorsports was founded in 2013 by team owner Barry Nelson and quickly made an impact on the late-model racing circuit throughout Virginia and the Carolinas. And whereas what began as a one-car experiment with NASCAR Camping World Truck Series driver, Timothy Peters, quickly transformed into a multi-car operation. And whereas throughout the years, the team has fielded many other fantastic drivers, such as Sammy Smith, Ty Gibbs, 2021 Cars Tour Rookie of the Year, Kaden Honeycutt, and 2021 Cars Tour Champion Bobby McCarty. And whereas, since the inception of the team, it has steadily climbed the ranks and has numerous prestigious wins, to include two Virginia Triple Crown victories and three Cars Tours Point Championship wins. And whereas, as the current Cars Tours Champions and Virginia Triple Crown winners, Nelson Motorsports is poised to continue its success in 2022. And whereas, this level of success in automotive competition is reflective of a motorsports culture in Henry County, which inspires this team to drive for the love of racing. And whereas, Henry County values this commitment to racing and appreciates the effort put forward by Nelson Motorsports to continue its legacy in our area. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 26th day of April 2022, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors congratulates Nelson Motorsports on its recent championship victories and encourages all local citizens to join in celebrating the team's success over the past nine years. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board adopt this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Ms. Buchanan and Vice Chairman Bryant, if you will present this along with Supervisor Dillard, if you all will present this to Nelson Motorsports, and we have with us a special guest tonight along with that, and that is Mr. Jack McNally, who's affiliated with the Cars Tour. And Mr. McNally, we welcome you tonight as well.
You all go ahead. Okay.
I want to say something. These two young men, I hired them well, they came to work for me, but they're both PH graduates. It's a truly homegrown PH team, I mean, Henry County team.
That's great.
Okay. My name is Jack McNally. I live in Mooresville, North Carolina, and I own the Cars Tour, which is a shortened version championship auto racing series. It became, we accepted in twenty fifteen, and we offer late-model stock as well as pro-late-model racing on half, quarter, and third mile racetracks. That being said, in twenty sixteen, I had the pleasure of meeting Barry Nelson for the first time. He came to Orange County with driver Timothy Peters and stole our money. That was the first time that they had ever competed with us, came down and won, and I never saw them again until twenty eighteen. So I don't know if they spent all the money and they needed to come back or what, but anyway, in twenty eighteen, they came back with full force, with one of their drivers with Bobby McCarty, who's going to be here this evening, and Timothy Peters. Since that time, since twenty eighteen, the original race of twenty eighteen, we have had a Nelson Motorsports car or cars in every event in our series in over three and a half years now. Sometimes there was one, most of the time two, sometimes three cars. So number one and foremost, they have been extremely loyal and supportive. I would like to also address the fact, it's already been brought out of their success on the track. I would like to talk about the integrity of this race team. In three and a half years, we have never found a violation on a Nelson Motorsports car as far as technical inspection is concerned, never. I would also like to, I spoke of loyalty, and these are things, folks, that any business relationship strives to achieve. Integrity, loyalty, cooperativeness. I have never, never gone to the pit area of Nelson Motorsports and asked them to do something that was begrudgingly done or even close to that. They have been more than, more than willing to cooperate. They are driven, another attribute to this team, they are driven to win each and every night. They are a hard-working group that has one goal, and that is winning. Positive attitude. Nelson Motorsports members realize that there are ups and downs in racing, the same as any sport. I can tell you very honestly, they have found the happy medium. I have never seen them, never seen them so far down on a bad night or so far high on a winning night, and carry a very even keel throughout. In closing, I would simply like to say that I truly, truly understand the Commissioner's resolution of honoring these people for not only their achievements, but their persona and the great ambassadors that they are of Henry County. I think all of you need to be very, very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNally, and we know winning is important to a lot of folks, but good representation of this area. Thank you for those kind words, and it's been on more than one occasion that they have flown the colors, so to speak, in some sort of paint scheme, either hood or some other area on the car representing Henry County. And so when they're carrying our name outside of the area, we're glad to hear that it's well represented. Barry, you're to be congratulated.
Great. Thank you all for being here tonight. We've got several public hearings tonight, beginning with agenda item number sixteen, a public hearing on a proposed solid waste management plan. Mr. Hall?
Henry County is a partner with the city of Martinsville and the town of Ridgeway in a solid waste management plan. The plan outlines the long-term strategy and goals set by the three entities concerning solid waste management. The goals of this plan include coordinating the efforts of the entities regarding solid waste management and planning. The plan outlines objectives for all management of solid waste, including at a minimum all the following elements: source reduction, reuse, recycling, resource recovery, which is waste to energy, landfilling, and transfer stations. The board must hold a public hearing before approving this updated plan, and the plan is in your working papers, and at the end of the public hearing, staff would recommend a vote to approve the plan.
I'll open public hearing to take input on this at six fourteen P M. Is there anyone wishing to speak in regard to this solid waste management plan that is proposed? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six fifteen. You all have had an opportunity to review numerous pages of background material in regard to this and have heard staff's recommendation. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation of approving the updated solid waste management plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number seventeen, a public hearing for proposed ordinance creating a tourism zone. Mr. Hall?
At last month's meeting, staff recommended that the board consider establishing a tourism zone in Henry County to help recruit tourism-related businesses. Much like traditional industry enterprise zones, a tourism zone allows businesses to take advantage of state and local tax incentives not available to businesses elsewhere. These incentives aim to stimulate the business attraction, growth, and increased employment opportunities within Henry County. Staff recommends that Henry County's tourism zone mirror the areas of the county zone as commercial B one. To be eligible for incentives similar to enterprise zone incentives, the tourism-related business would have to make new capital investment of at least five hundred thousand dollars and create five new full-time jobs. Prior to adopting the ordinance, the board must hold a public hearing on this matter. It's been advertised and is scheduled for tonight. You have the background within your working papers, and following the public hearing, staff recommends adoption of the tourism zone ordinance.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at six sixteen. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on the proposed ordinance creating a tourism zone? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six sixteen. Again, you all have a staff recommendation. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, we have the board adopt the tourism zone ordinance.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number eighteen, public hearing, budget amendment allocating sales tax revenue. Mr. Hall?
At your last meeting, the board voted to replace the two point six million dollars in the budget previously appropriated for school debt from the reserve funds and to study a public hearing for April twenty-sixth at six P M. as required when amending the budget by more than one percent. This public hearing has been properly advertised and is scheduled for tonight, and following the public hearing, staff recommends the board consider the appropriation to replace the two point six million in the budget previously appropriated for school debt and to replace that from reserve funds.
I'll open the public hearing at six eighteen to take input on this item. Is there anyone wishing to address the board? I see one hand. I have a brief statement to read. This goes for not only the public hearing, but matters presented by the public tonight. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. The members of this board and staff are committed to giving you the same consideration. Please keep your presentation three to five minutes. Ms. Morton, I saw your hand.
I'd like to thank you folks for giving me a few minutes tonight just to share my thoughts on the appropriation of the school board money to the county side. I think we could have probably avoided this whole public hearing if, if everybody had been a little more diligent in interpreting the law. And I thought, nobody's sitting up there for that. You have people that you take advice from, and that's what you go with. That's what you're supposed to do. The, the Attorney General's analysis of that law was not just an opinion, and I wish that the money had been returned sooner, and we may not have had to have this adjustment now. Now, I'm sh- I've already seen where I think you wanted to take one point six million out of the facilities budget for the school. I'm not sure exactly why you do that. I'm familiar with the school board, school board budget, but not a county budget, but I'm hoping that you'll reconsider that, because returning this two point six to the school board is simply because it should have never been taken from them in the first place. So let's don't penalize them, because they didn't do anything wrong here. So let's keep the school, let's keep the school budget where it needs to be. The taxpayers went to the polls and voted for this one percent tax increase strictly for the schools. It does not say anything in the law that Senator Tommy Norman wrote about paying off prior debt service with this money. It's a real simple, full-sentence law to read. So to cut the, cut the budget because you're having to take this away now, I don't think that's fair. That may not be why you did it. That's just my thoughts on it. That's my thoughts. The education system is one of the biggest assets for economic development that you, that we have. So let's don't be skimpy with the funds. You're having trouble retaining good teachers, you can't find bus drivers, now is not the time to be saying cut on the school board budget. Every cut to school finances is a cut to economic development. I'm pretty sure that you could find a way to not have to take this money from them. And I hope it's being taken by necessity and not just because you have to give back something that you shouldn't have had in the first place. And I thank you for your time and your support to your local education system, and remember our, your local, your education system for future development and economic, and economic development starts at four, not at graduation. So you gotta fund these schools from here, not up. You gotta start early, because at the end of the day, companies coming here, people moving here, one of the first things they're gonna ask about is your educational system, your school system, and I'm sure you know that. And you gotta have a good one, with good, good state money, good local money, and good cooperation between the two boards. Not have any miscommunication on things. If you have a legal issue that you're not sure of, sometimes it don't hurt to get an outside opinion. When I was on the school board, I did that more than once. So y'all try to find a way not to cut that school budget this year, because having to move this money back into your budget, that was a misuse on y'all's part. Thank you, and I mean, no disrespect to anybody sitting there. Have a good evening.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing in regard to the budget amendment? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six twenty-two. What action would the board like to take in the form of a motion in regard to this?
Mr. Chairman, we have the board approve the appropriation to replace the two point six million in the budget previously appropriated for school debt from the reserve funds.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda, if someone will, from staff will go and get Mrs. Hughes, we've got matters presented by the public, and then we'll have a, a general highway matter. Agenda item nineteen, matters presented by the public. There was indication from one gentleman that he would like to speak tonight. I asked him to come to the podium, as I stated in the earlier statement, state your name and your, and your subject matter.
Name's Roger Saunders. Subject is Comcast. I understand that y'all let Comcast close the local store due to COVID. Do you realize that Danville and Pennsylvania County has a population of one hundred and two thousand? Henry County and Martinsville is about sixty-three thousand. Their store is open fifty-three hours a week. Based on the population, Martinsville store ought to be open at least thirty-three hours a week. I've been trying for the last three months to get things worked out with cable. The repairman will tell you that their equipment that you get by U P S don't work half the time. Five years ago, none of it worked. They're improving. And decent mailbox. When I went to pick it up, I seen it had been dropped. It was damaged before I even got it in the house. Can y'all please help get the store, or let's get another cable company in Henry County? Thank you for your time. I hope to see some results soon.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Seeing no indication as such, we'll go to agenda item number twenty, general highway matters. Ms. Hughes?
We've had our six-year plan public hearing, and we did get several requests in the Blackberry District on Horsepech Price Road, Lead Ford Camp Road, and I did get a letter requesting that we add that Crow's Nest Road be improved and added to the system, and, and that would be a rule addition. And as we've talked about before, the board is, is bound by five percent of your allocation to put towards rule additions, and with a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, that, that doesn't amount to, to a lot of money. So I will respond to Ms. Kaufman in that regard. Couple things, last month, I misspoke on the date of the spring transportation hearing, and it is May twelfth next, in a couple weeks, but it is at four P M., and it is at the Holiday Inn Valley View. But that is May twelfth. And just one project I wanted to tell you about to, to give you an update on, the intersection of fifty-eight and Preston Road, you know, we spoke of that several times. We do plan to install some overhead flashers. Now, the design has been completed, and we want to advertise that project late this year for construction first to next year. And that's all I have.
Is there anyone have any items from Ms. Hughes tonight?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It's come to me, I guess, a couple different times. Ashton Elementary School, is there, has there been any study or anything about, I don't know, stoplight or something in the mornings when there's, you know, parents turning in? There's not much room, and when traffic's going down fifty-eight, you come over that little hill, and it's oftentimes a disaster in the mornings. If you come in going fifty-eight east. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Be glad to.
And I, I just, Lisa, would you mark down that culvert I was talking to you about? Okay, thank you.
Any other items? I, I have one comment in regard to that. State indicates that it has a significant amount of budget, I mean, not budget, but money surplus. We're talking about billions. Any indication that any of that would ever be siphoned down to take care of some things as far as rule improvements?
Not, not at this time. I know there was a presentation to the Commonwealth Transportation Board the first of the year that, that sort of led us to believe that the funds would be increased, and, and I think they will, but I, I don't know the scope of those increases at this time, or the magnitude.
All right. Thank you.
And I'm not, Lisa, you just said Transportation Safety Board. I don't know if we got anything on the Bridges naming.
Yes, that will go before the board in May. It was scheduled to go in April, but we had one little hiccup. It was a trooper that we had to get also concurrence from the captain of the state police, and Richmond is handling that, and it'll be ready to go before the board in May.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I assume that your public hearing- And I assume that your public hearing will be concluded. Do you need to come back for that?
No, no. I think that, that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, do you have any other items that the Board needs to consider tonight?
No, sir.
Board members, do you have any other items for the Board's consideration?
No, sir.
If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second. Have a motion, second. All in favor? It's 6-0, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening.